So Sunday.
Okay.
If you'll join us in flag salute, please.
Flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Bourbon County Commission Meeting, January 8th, 5:30 PM. Approval consent agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which this week is minutes payroll and accounts payable.
I second. I just had one question.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity.
The most second, any discussion?
Yep. What's the, for thirteen hundred dollars, a special prosecutor trust forfeiture and the accounts payable? Let me see, I'm getting pulled up here now. Carpool Solutions. For thirteen hundred dollars.
I would have to pull that at that invoice to see.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I was just kind of glancing through these and I didn't know what that was, so.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I think I've got some.
Okay, cool. We'll move on and.
Yeah, there was one on there I questioned too, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I don't, I don't think there's any public comments.
Public comment?
I was forced to believe it.
You're right.
You don't want me to retract that now?
Did you sign up? Did he really?
He wouldn't let me. Yeah, whatever.
It's blank, Michael.
I was playing.
He was, he was joking.
Go ahead.
I, I hope you all got this information on the Starbond and the TIF. And I believe it's fairly neutral. It's not negative one way or another, kind of gave you basic information. And if anybody else out there would like to receive this, I have it in PDF format. I can be happy to email it to you.
Thank you.
And I think everybody knows my email.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay. Department update, Public Works. Hello, Eric.
Good evening.
How are you?
Great.
Great. I understand.
'Tis the season. All right. No Colbert reports for the month of December. We didn't have any new ones to install. Fuel report, I believe that was emailed to everyone. So, we have that. Annual bridge inspections, I need to get approval. Twenty-one bridges, five low water crossings, eight thousand from Schwab Eaton. They do them every year. We really don't have a choice. We're mandated to do the inspect, so. Here's their contract and we'll kind of, I think we have to be done by the end of January, so we're kind of on the. Behind a little bit with it. Holidays and what have you. Anyhow, there's chairman and then there's clerk and then for the other two to sign.
Okay, make a motion that we. The proposal for twelve-month annual interim update to, oh, this bridge inspection and analysis. The interim twelve-month routine bridge inspections, which are due January of twenty-four. For, and it's Schwab Eaton, for eight thousand dollars and three commissioners are to sign.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is our bridge at Sixtieth and Grand. An agreement for that. Justin has reviewed the contract. It's the same as we've done on the other, I believe that's at one hundred and sixtieth and burn, I believe it is. But anyhow, that's, if you so choose to go into that on the front page here, we'll lay it out. The agreement with KDOT for the bridge at Sixtieth and Grand.
So make a motion to. We've already accepted this, haven't we?
Yes, but this is the agreement between KDOT and Bourbon County to do the project.
So then, make a motion to sign the agreement of something that we've already accepted, which is project number zero zero six C dash five two eight six dash zero dash zero one. B R O dash C five two eight six oh one, off-system bridge program, Bourbon County, Kansas.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion?
Other than I don't like inefficiencies.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye.
Just the process. Process is broken.
All right. Next, have some good news. I think it's great news as a matter of fact, but the landfill compactor that you gave us permission to spend up to a hundred thousand. We were able to purchase that for twenty-one thousand five hundred, so. We had, has a very good purchase and it's already.
Very good, very good.
Made a huge impact out there just by how much it's compacting the, the ground and what have you, so. Yeah, that was a.
Yeah, I'm just going to throw a number out there, but as far as going to add, twenty-five years of that space.
Yeah.
Just the compaction.
Yeah. I seen it take a railroad tie and turn it into a toothpick, so that kind of tells you what they're capable of doing, so I would not want to be underneath one of them wheels.
No.
But anyhow, feel good on that. Our motor grinders, the two that we're selling on Purple Wave sell tomorrow. Right now, one's at forty-six five and one is at forty-five five, so they usually take a little pretty good jump the day that they sell, but we'll see what happens. So. Last Thursday, we done a blast at Shepherd Quarry. Ended up with forty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-seven tons on that blast. The crushers moved there, we're in proc, or we've got other equipment there, we're in the process of getting set up. And then our loader's being worked on, we'll get it back and then whether it cooperates, we'll get started crushing, so.
Good.
And we can get quite a bit of rock on the, get the rock on the road in that area is what I should say, so. And then last but not least, big winter storm. Supposed to hit, hit a little bit today. I think they missed that a little bit on the forecast, but anyhow, we went ahead and sent trucks out today around one o'clock. Push slush off the road. There was areas that had quite a bit of slush on the road, so. Got that pushed off, scheduled to come in at four in the morning. Got a crew coming in at four, they'll go four to noon, and then we got a crew coming in at ten, they'll go ten to six, ten in the morning to six at night. According to the weather channels and what have you, that will cover the, the storm. We'll see.
Good luck.
Good luck with that, so. But anyhow, trying to do it, keep the overtime to a minimum and. Be prepared for the rest of the week because they tell us there's more coming in the latter part of the week, so. We're full on our salt, we're full on our ice control. We do have five dump trucks back now, got our fifth one back today. That has been a, let's say, challenge. It's, this was the third time they brought it back to us.
This is one that was wrecked and they rebuilt.
Yes, the one that was wrecked, so. But I think they've got things correct, but they still have two doors that have to be fixed yet and. It'll be ready to go, but at least we can operate it now and have it for the storms.
Good.
We started that process about December thirteenth. They told us to come pick it up and we've been battling back and forth, but we do have it in our possession now and we'll be able to use it, so. With that, I really don't have anything else. I think we got, I think you had a project, you called me on or.
Yep.
We got it. I think you had one maybe, I'm not for sure, sign I believe it was. So, any others that I need to?
No, thanks for getting that fixed. I got a call from the Bronson County Clerk.
Oh, yes, yes.
And she was wanting to meet with you or maybe both of us at some point.
Yeah.
Bronson City Clerk, yep.
They're wanting to see, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, she just called me a couple of days ago.
Their Public Works Band called me as well. In-kind services, if it's something we can do, something we can't do, they need to know. Chip it ceiling, things like that, so we need to see if we can, if we can't, how that all plays out, works out. But we also have to realize during that, if we do that, then it takes away from ours as well, so we'll. But we haven't got into our program yet on what we're thinking for next year. I would say we have it. We have a rough idea, but we don't have anything on paper yet, but. I told them I'd visit with them, see what they had, had to say, see if it's something we can help, help with. We'll have to bring it back to you guys to see.
I don't know how it was structured, but we did it before.
Right.
Chip and seal.
Right.
Years ago.
Yeah.
Been a long time ago, too. Now, something else that you might put on your radar, the city's going to ask us about asphalt, so.
Yep.
It's coming. You probably heard it also.
I'm hearing rumors.
I don't know what that means.
Right.
You know. We can do anything to assist on these streets.
Sure.
Save my truck.
Sure.
That's terrible, isn't it? Anyway, I figured you already knew that, but they're going to come talk to us. I don't know what they're going to say yet, so.
Okay. Yeah, and those are all discussions, so it's up to you. You tell me what works best for you.
Yeah, well, my baby's coming Friday.
Okay.
So, we're going to be busy with that probably, but I want, maybe, maybe she can come to a commission meeting maybe or, you know.
However.
Yeah, if we.
Or maybe our work session?
Yeah, if we can, I know we'll have to all three agree and maybe even Justin, but you know, if we can, I'd like to help him out since, you know, it's all in Bourbon County.
Sure. Yeah, hundred percent.
Yeah. We've done that for them and we did it for Fulton, too, in the past, chip sealed, so.
We just told Maple to no, so.
Yeah.
That's true, we did that.
Not sure how we can.
Right.
Good point, good, very good point.
Yep, so. Anything else?
I had this conversation with Destre Browns. Super Ten U two thirty-four, and he thanked you for communicating to him today.
Okay.
What storm might be and what you might be doing and asked what he needed for help, so.
Okay.
He sent a big thank you to you.
Okay.
So.
All right.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. I just, that storm come on us and.
Yeah.
I didn't know what time they were going to let, let out for sure, so we wanted to do what we could to help.
Yeah, and I appreciate that school buses are proud of you, so.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
So.
I don't have anything else.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Eric.
You bet.
Thanks.
Now, Jim, if we get short people, may have to call them.
I can do it, buddy.
I know you can.
I can, I can do it. But now, my memory's terrible, but I do remember some mailboxes I don't like. And all you got to do is move over three inches, you can get that baby.
Record seven and a quarter miles.
Yeah. And then mail, then mailbox just, just explode. Anyway, I wouldn't do that on purpose, would I, Mark? No, okay.
Especially if you were getting paid nine dollars an hour.
Yeah, at least nine. Okay, Matt Quick, County Praiser, please. Good evening, sir.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. My section just, it's just more informational, I'm glad Jason's here because I want to get some of this information out in the paper as well, but. Every year, by January first, we send out what we call personal property renditions forms, okay? And on that form, for anybody that has personal property in Bourbon County, it has their name on it, plus what we have as far as the personal property that they have. There's no values on it, there's no bill on it, there's nothing like that. It's purely informational, so that they know what we have in the system for them under personal property. It is supposed to be signed, whether, and marked yes or no, whether you still own that stuff, and returned to our office by March first. So, we want to get that out there because there is a penalty associated with that. If you do not bring that, this form back in by March first to us, there will be a penalty assessed on your taxes for this stuff for, in December when you get your bill. So, it's a pretty simple form. It just says what they, what we have down for them. They can look it over. If they see something that's wrong, just bring it in, say no and mark it, and we will fix it from there, but. We get so many people at the end of December when they get their tax bill and they come in, they're like, well, I sold this trailer four years ago. Well, we've sent out a rendition every year for four years saying you had that trailer and you never returned it to us saying that, so. It happens. This, this allows us to, to nix a lot of that stuff, so we don't have that going on. So, that was one of the things I want to talk about with that. The other is, you know, people need to understand that if they sell a trailer, a ATV, a boat, or anything like that. They have got to come to our office to let us know that they sold that stuff, otherwise we don't know, okay? Just because you turned a tag into the tag office, we don't get anything from them saying that this stuff has been sold, so. It, it's a little bit of burden on the, on the taxpayer to make sure that we know that so that we can get it off. Now, we have no problem, you know, later on taking stuff off if we discover it, but. These are things that we try to get ahead of, so we don't have so many phone calls at the end of the year saying, you know, I sold this, I did that, you know, why do you still have it on there? The last thing is on a boat, if you sell a boat and the person that takes it doesn't register it in Kansas. And they just keep, maybe if it's a John boat, maybe it's something and they're not going to register it. If they don't call, we always say Pratt, but if they don't call Fish and Wildlife Department and tell them that they've sold that and under registered that boat. We get a list every year from them of the people that own boats in Bourbon County, according to them, and it goes right back on, on there, so that's another thing that people got to make sure that they, that they do as well.
I had to, I, I had to have to vote with the boat. I came in and pay the taxes. They had it in here.
Jason. You can come around.
Yeah, you can come. And I went down to your office, they said it was taken off a long time ago.
Right.
But I'd already paid the taxes, it wasn't nothing, so. But somehow it can get lost.
Sometimes there can be many communication loss between us and the treasurer's office on some things like that, and we fix it, you know, it's not a problem. So, yeah, I just want to get that out there because that's something that we, we fight every year at the end of the year. The ladies get a little frustrated with it, you know? Because we always have people come in and say, I don't own that anymore. Well, we've sent out a rendition showing that, you know, that's there. You need to let us know that you don't have it anymore, so. We try to stay ahead of that and makes, makes things a little better. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Anything else? Any questions? I just wanted to get that, you know, for Jason to get that out in the paper and the Facebook world, just to kind of get the word spread to everybody so they know. Don't just throw this thing away. It's got to be signed or returned to our office by March first, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
This is Susan Walker, CFO. Good evening.
Before the holidays, I had sent a couple of audit proposals. We have reached out to, between Jennifer and I, we've reached out to about five different audit firms. Only two were willing. Several of them just are not doing the business anymore, or they have too many clients. So you really have two proposals in front of you and we really need to make a decision because. We are behind on their scheduling, and so if we don't, we don't make a decision quickly, then there's a good chance we won't have an audit until June or July. And of course, we need this information for our budget preparation, so.
These are the same two, right?
Yeah, these are the same two, and like I said, one was double, almost double the other, so.
Susan, I would comment, but I know we're, got to do some things, but as you also are aware, I don't like any one of these proposals, but, but.
Yeah.
We got to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted me to put out something with a, a sealed proposal, we could do that.
I don't think it would change anything, probably.
I don't either. Jennifer and I both, and I've, I've been to a lot of Scott Lloyd's presentations, and he's very knowledgeable in the law. He teaches classes on it in the state of Kansas and. He's seeing more and more clients now, too, because people are just aren't, you know, the single audits and, and all the preparation for it is kind of tedious.
So one's forty-five thousand and the other's twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, that's what I mean, kind of a.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to use Jared Gilmore Phillips Certified Public Accountants. Their, their bid is twenty-four thousand. I guess Jared Gilmore and Phillips, P A, out of Shunid, Kansas. Their bid was twenty-four thousand, the other's forty-five. That's my motion.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Terry Haldy, EMS Director. Good evening.
Good evening. Couple of things. First thing, it's craft grant time again. I'm, this time we're going to go after another Lucas device. And also some RAD fifty-seven pulse oximeters, which those will detect carbon monoxide. So.
Sounds great.
I just need signature from you. There's the top two pages.
Is it just Jim?
Yes, just Jim.
Okay, make a motion to allow the chairman to sign the. The paperwork for the grant submissions for craft, what do you say, craft?
Craft grant.
Craft grant.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then, next thing, I was, sent a message on Facebook questioning regarding transport patients, regarding ambulance versus insurance. And I answered the lady's question, but she asked if I would make it public, so.
Okay.
I figured I would come here and make it public. The question was, if the patient is alert or if the patient is with a person that can legally make decisions for them, and they know their insurance will not cover a certain area and are able to let you know this. Will we then transport that patient to a facility covered by their insurance upon request? My answer to her was, we will transport to the closest appropriate ER based on medical condition. Yes, if you're alert and able to make a sound medical decision, we will honor that request. Also, if you have someone with you that can make that decision for you or let us know. With, with the stipulations, our example, if you're having a cardiac event, heart attack, or something needing a cardiologist. Via Christie Pitt would be the closest appropriate ER, even if they're not in your network. Multi-system trauma would need to go to the closest appropriate trauma center. A stroke would need to go to a stroke center. I said if we were able to, if we were to transport to any of these examples to an ER that was not capable of handling, then you would be incurring another ambulance bill, be air or ground.
Agenda, I'm sorry.
I said, you know, no matter what, we, we have protocols that we have to follow to protect our liability. I mean. Coming from when I worked in the insurance world. And I, I mean, I'm sure things have changed over the years because it's been years since I worked insurance, but even if in an emergency situation. If you're taken to an out-of-network facility. Most generally, in the past, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and say that's the way it is today. I mean. I know that's the way our insurance is because I looked it up because I just got my packet in the mail. It is paid at the network benefit. So, I mean, if anybody has any more questions, you know, reach out to me. If I don't have the answer, I'll find the answer. So.
Well, thank you.
That's all I have.
All right.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Hawkins, County Clerk, please.
So we have a few resolutions for 2024. These are ones that we issue every year. The first one is Resolution one dash twenty-four, a resolution concerning the waiver of generally accepted accounting principles.
Make a motion to, and up Resolution one dash twenty-four, a resolution concerning the waiver of generally accepted accounting principles.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, Resolution two dash twenty-four is to designate depositories and the official publication carrier. So, in compliance with KSA nine dash fourteen oh one, the following banks of Bourbon County are selected as depositories of funds by the county treasurer. City State Bank, U M B Bank N A, Union State Bank, Liberty Savings and Loan, Landmark National Bank, Citizens Bank N A. The county's active account will be carried in Landmark National Bank, and then the official county newspaper will be the Fort Scott Tribune.
Make a motion as stated by the county clerk on Resolution number two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, so Resolution three dash twenty-four is authorizing participation in the Rural Opportunity Zone Student Loan Repayment Program for the calendar year 2024. So in this, we are listed as allocating zero dollars a year for the purpose of matching payments from the state of Kansas.
Hi, make a motion, pass Resolution number three dash twenty-four, Resolution of Bourbon County Commissioners Authorizing Participation in the Rural Opportunity Zone Student Loan Repayment Program, calendar year 2024. And as you stated, allocate zero dollars for this purpose.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Okay, and then I ask that we amend the agenda to discuss implement weather and then the county's policies and procedures regarding such.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion of implement weather in the county.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Amend the agenda.
Okay, so this is my first year as clerk, so I just want to get what is our policy for implement weather? If you choose to close the courthouse, how would we be notified and who needs to notify other personnel?
My short experience is kind of on a case-by-case basis.
And you are correct, but we had some mass confusion last year over.
Yes.
Communication, some of it was my fault, some of it was the director's fault, but anyway, it's a good idea that she brought it up, so.
Yeah, because I remember last year there was a little controversy, I think, over. People with eight-hour days getting paid and people with twelve-hour shifts not, and. Yeah, so I don't want that again.
Well, I mean. Certainly, in my opinion, i- if a person doesn't feel it's safe to drive on the roads, don't. I mean, if we're open. You know, what I consider safe is certainly going to be different than somebody else. Plain and simple. But, I mean, i- if the weather's bad and there's an inch of ice out there, we need to shut it down. I mean, obviously, I think, and we've done that in the past more than once, since I've been a commissioner, and it's always been a back and forth. And honestly, Justin's usually involved in this. You know, talking to the chairman, talking to the other commissioners, you know, the directors of how we shut it down, or do we, or do we not? I don't have a problem. You. Hey, Justin?
I guess the elected officials could decide for their offices, right? And they could make your own decision on that. I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to ask him. Yeah, that's what I'm gonna ask him. Who, who has the ultimate decision on that, I guess?
Well, there's, there's actually some things to take into consideration, cause if you shut the building down, the court closes. So if you shut down the county, um, they can't operate the court. If, courts sometimes will close and, you know, preempt you guys. So it's just a matter of, you know, foreseeability, safety. And I've had, um, the chairman in the past call and say, hey, what do you think? I say, it's up to you usually, but we talk it through and make that decision. I mean, if there's gonna be a weather event of six to eight inches of snow, it's foreseeable that people could be put in harm's way.
Now, last year, I had several conversations with you, and I did have a conversation with Eric and Shame was watching the Weather Channel. So we had numerous conversations and we made a decision.
Yes. I mean, I think that, um, foreseeability is, is part of this. I mean, it's, it's a safety issue. I mean, sometimes the state will help make that decision too. I mean, if you got a mass, I mean, you have an inch of ice, you're not gonna want your people to come in.
Right.
I, I think the only, the, the other part that Commissioner Black brought up is you, you know, there's always been a confusion and I'm not, I don't, never had a really clarification on what the F, you know, like the first later standards act would kick in, but if it's a vacation time, do you, if you don't drive in, do you have to take a vacation day, sick day? Yeah. So, but a lot of it's up to elected officials too.
I mean, I would say, I mean, my point is, I may drive on three inches of snow.
Right.
Somebody else may be scared to drive on three inches of snow. Who's right and who's wrong?
I, I think some discussion also last year was, some of the public works guys said, well, I worked for eight hours. The lady at the courthouse got off, still got paid for eight hours. There was discussion there.
I think, I think the re- the resolution or the way that they resolved that, there was a time and a half that occurred. I think the last time that the court, the, the court was shut down. But, you know, we've talked about this too. What's a, what's an accident worth? What's a life worth? I mean.
Yeah, I think you're right. Last year, we did work up time and a half of those. I don't remember if you're correct. That's how it was resolved.
That's how it was resolved, yes.
Or they, I mean, a- and that's fine if that's what they want, or they can just take it off later in the, I mean, in the week, as far as that is, as far as I'm concerned.
Gotta be a little careful about compton and how it works with, you know, but the le- the elected officials have, you know, just another banter. If an elected official doesn't want their people to come in, that's,
Yeah.
you know, that's a different construct. You guys are responsible for the non-elected personnel. I mean, if, you know, she's, Jennifer's here, so if she wanted to have her, she says it's too dangerous, you don't need to come in, that's her call. And she can compensate, help, you know, whatever she wants to do with that. It's in her budget, so she'd have the authority to do that.
And so how would the commission shut down the courthouse with each individual, which I agree with you.
Right. I think once, I think one, if the commission shuts down the courthouse, they'd be up to the elected official to actually keep their office open. But they wouldn't, the public wouldn't have access. So usually, if the commission decides to shut the courthouse down, you're basically shutting down the, the elected officials too. Which isn't a bad thing sometimes, if it's, you know, dangerous.
And we could contact you, and you would contact the other elected officials at our decision.
No, once, I think, I think, um, from my recollection, the last time this happened, there was a, there was an email that went out. I think there were some people that were missed from that email chain, but I think with Jennifer and her expertise, she could easily get an email out. I mean, I think, I think we've, in the past, we also made a motion to give the chairman, you know, the ultimate authority. I, you know, that's still, I think, was being standing, but you might wanna make a motion to give the chairman the ability to make the call. Or we've had emergency meetings before where we've published and had the three commissioners come in and actually make that decision, kinda like a, almost like a game day decision, but it's been done both ways. But I think with this, with this commission and with everyone's thoughts, I think, just, I think it'd be easier just to give the chairman, it's my opinion, the chairman, the discretion to make that decision and then go from there, and then the pay would probably be time and a half just to make it.
So, I remember last year, like, um, some people, like EMS and sheriff's deputies voicing, you know, displeasure with the fact that.
Right.
They, so, but I don't remember that ever being resolved. Did they?
I think it was resi- I, you know, obviously, I'm getting older, so my recollection, but I think, I think they did get paid time and a half. I think that was the ultimate resolution.
Let's, if, if the chairman, if, if the chairman decides to shut the courthouse down and all the employees that work eight-hour shifts in this building,
Mm-hmm.
they get, you know, paid vacation or whatever. They get paid for not coming to work.
Right. The, the essential.
Twelve-hour shifters that are gonna work no matter what.
Would just be like.
Time and a half of those eight hours.
Yeah, it'd just be like holiday. I think it's, I mean, don't quote me on it. It'd be just like holiday parody. Like, the essential EMS, sheriff, Roden Bridge.
I just don't wanna repeat it last.
Yeah. Well, we're getting ahead of it, I think. So if you have that decision now, and it makes it, you know, equitable.
Do we, is that reasonable that if, if we do close it, then they get time and a half?
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay. Then that should keep everyone happy then.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, it, basically, you know, we work, it's, it's, I wanna be a weather person in my next life. But, you know, it's changed now, and I think it's, it's flipped. So I think the storm actually is coming. I think it's gonna be pretty good.
Tomorrow?
Pretty good weather event, yeah.
And a pretty good one may be Friday.
Mm-hmm. We need the moisture.
We need the moisture. Okay. So what I'm hearing is that
We're just gonna continue with the chairman having the decision and.
And I will work with Justin and Eric and Shame of the Weather Channel. I will gather all kinds of information to make that decision.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And we know how everyone's gonna be paid, so there shouldn't be nobody mad there.
Yep.
And foreseeability is important.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. An answer to your question?
Not good enough, Jim?
Yeah, I just wanted to see who is going to be doing the notifying, if I need to send out an email, phone call, just wanted to see who.
It would be great. I think that if, yeah, if the decision is made, that you would, somebody should, should send an email out.
Absolutely. So if somebody, if that decision is made, if you could contact me.
We will contact you, and I would ask you to send out an email blast.
Of course, that's not to say that if you don't shut it down, that anybody else, you know.
Right.
You can, my office is closed.
Yeah. She can shut down her own office, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we are all on the same page and know what's going on.
That's gonna cause a problem, because if they shut down their office and we don't shut down this courthouse, those people, in my opinion, will have to take PTO.
Very good point.
Well.
Justin?
They're elected officials, so that's within whatever they wanna do, right? I mean.
Yeah, but if they, if those, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you hear the question?
Yeah. But, I mean, what I'm saying, this is what's gonna happen though, with what you just said, is she's gonna, and I'm just gonna use an example.
That's fine.
Jennifer's gonna shut her office down, and then everybody's gonna say, well, she shut her office. I want time and a half. And that's not what we mean.
Oh, wait, no, no, that's an easy problem to fix. You just say, hey, the entire courthouse wasn't shut.
I can guarantee you that's what would happen.
Yeah, there's, okay. I was gonna say, there's a difference between elected official and the county shutting down.
That's where.
Yeah, I see. Right. I see.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I'm like, yeah, no.
No?
Okay.
Okay.
Jennifer, do we have to elect a new commission chairman tonight? Are we supposed to?
At, at some point, you need to decide who is going to be the chairman. I don't know that.
You know, it's not, or next week, month later, or whatever.
I don't know of any timeline.
Okay. I'm just curious if there was a timeline.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Sheriff Bill Martin, retirement of K nine. Sheriff Bill. Good evening, sir. How are you, Bill?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
I guess I'm sitting out there against Friday. Your wife's giving birth, so congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I'm here for you today in regards to the retirement of another K nine dog by the name of Pistol. I have with me tonight, uh, the K nine handler, Zach Ross, who will be taking custody of the dog. That was his dog while he was here. And so I just need, it's the same contract or the retirement papers that's been signed by the last three dogs that have been retired, so just need the chairman to sign it. And.
I make a motion for the chairman to sign this, um, retirement paperwork for K nine Pistol, uh, so the dog can go to Deputy Zach Ross.
Second.
That motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
He'll need to, he gets to retire.
Do it.
Just tell him it doesn't pay very good.
Yeah. Retirement plan stuff. It might be good, you know? Thank you. The other thing on the agenda I wanna talk to you about is that, uh, we've had another car that's been totaled in an accident. I'm working with the insurance company now, trying to get that figured out. Uh, they've already submitted that they will give us approximately eleven thousand dollars for the vehicle. It's a hundred and fifty-two thousand miles on it. It's one of our older cars. Um, twenty sixteen, so it's up there in mileage. I'm still working with the insurance company. I've reached out to the other, uh, business where we purchased the other vehicles from, uh, where they were turnkey writing. But I've been waiting for a quote from them, so that I can pair, compare apples to oranges with the insurance company, so what was damaged in the car, we can take out for the, uh, for the insurance company. So I'm asking that for that to be done, I'll probably have to work with the CFO, so I need your permission to talk to her about any monies or anything, if I have to go back to the county and pay for it outright, or if I have to go through a bank to get it financed that way. But I'm just here to get permission to talk to her to discuss that.
Yeah.
You want a motion or just a not?
Just.
I'm good with it.
All right. Working with CFO with a, you gotta have a vehicle replacement somehow.
Yep. Yep. So, other than that, all right.
Thank you, Bill. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Ross.
Thank you, Deputy Ross, for taking that out of retirement guy. Thank you, under Sheriff. Thank you. Okay. We're down to commission comments. Elton, you wanna go first?
I'm just gonna pray when I, when I.
I know, I know that.
Whenever you guys are done, just a little closing.
Um, uh, a couple, I don't know if the sheriff's still here and the other sheriff's still, yep, they're still here. Um, I think I already have permission to do this, but I would like to have permission, continued permission, that I would like to visit with under Sheriff, uh, Davidson and Sheriff Martin. I think we have, um, sheriff's deputies that are underpaid. And, um, I would like to see them get, uh, more money. Not my decision. That's absolutely Sheriff Martin's decision. But, um, I would like to, as the commissioner, go to them and talk to them about, uh, trying to get them some more money for their deputies.
I agree. And, you know, if Bill doesn't have any budget, we can work with Susan and possibly find some more money and move it or something. But I agree. I think we're losing deputies to the city.
Yeah.
Because they're paying much better, I think, that's happening. So we need to retain our deputies and have additional pay. So yes, Clifton, thank you.
Sounds good.
Other than that, I, I will say, I hate to even bring it up, but I think we were fairly harshly accused of something a couple of weeks ago of leaking information, I guess. Um, I don't know how you leak information that is public information to begin with, but anyway, we were harshly accused of that. Um, I wanna thank the paper for making a correction. Because it was not an executive session leak, but I did my own research. Um, found the, uh, core request was actually well after accounts payable came out. Um, so there could have been multiple people that quote-unquote leaked that information. So I don't, I don't, uh, I don't appreciate the insinuation that it was us. I've got a pretty good idea if it was, and, uh, I would be fair to say it was ninety-nine point nine percent wasn't a commissioner. But, but anyway, um, uh, uh, with that said, I just, just wanted to say that, you know, without information, a person shouldn't get up here and say that kinda stuff, I don't think, but, you know, just accusing us of something of, almost criminal, I mean, according to those words. And I do believe though, that there should be consequences for things. I do believe that. Um, but anyway, with that said, I did my own research. It could have been a, any number of people um, that, that quote-unquote leaked information. Like I said, I'm not sure how you leak information that's public information to begin with, but, um, regardless, Jason, thank you for the correction. That's it.
I have two things. Uh, one, I'm not gonna repeat what you just said, and I agree with you a hundred percent. I'd just like to comment on, it was said that some of us are working the day after Christmas to do things. And I would like to comment, my eighteen years of public work, folks, I worked a lot of holidays, a lot of snow days, a lot of Christmases, a lot of Thanksgiving. That comes with the office, it comes with the job sometime, and I really appreciate, they appreciate those folks working, but it's insinuating we're like, we've never done that. And I know with the law enforcement, I'm sure you have to, and, and the nursing business, you have to. I've worked many, many holidays, so. Second thing, uh, Susan, are you still here? I have a question for you and Jennifer. Both. I, I like the new, I'll wait till you, I like the new payroll because I always thought we've got too much information anyway. I don't need to know what people deduct it. But what we're in charge of, can we get it by department, please? That would help me track the employees and help me track the budget numbers.
I'll have to get with Selena, cause she's doing payroll now.
Okay.
Um, we'll get with her and see if there's any, any work that can produce that.
Okay. Cause it's just one mass deal. And I think the information's great, cause again, I don't need to know what insurance he pays or what, but for what, how I track it by department, it would help me track the number of employees and the payroll or budget. So, thank you. That's all I have.
All righty. Should we close?
Yes.
In prayer?
Pray.
All right.
If you want us to pray, please?
Dear my Father, thank you for this evening. I pray that you would bless this meeting and the decisions that were made here. I pray that you will keep all the citizens of this county safe throughout their travels they may have in this bad weather. And I pray that you will keep my family safe and, uh, as we meet my son Friday, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Bless the son. That motion adjourned?
Second.
All right. On favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Somebody, somebody wait till I finish these, so I can leave with you. Okay. To them, yeah. Until we've been gone for a lot of weeks.